Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'll call this Monday evening, all these pipe talk commissioners meeting. We'll have cases from the water's office, all three commissioners, the county attorney. Start off with the adjutant mayor, you have anything to add?
Man, you didn't give us time to think about this.
No, I figured if you got any things to do, I'll help you get you out of here.
Yeah, I'm here for the duration, not that way everything is important. I guess the only thing I would say is we did start clearing out woods today. Beats in the hotels in preparation for the road, which you know, that's down the road. I mean, hard to find down the road, but we do hope to have it finished by May or June next year. But we started the process today, so we're excited to see what's happening there.
Yeah, it's been started, it's been doing, okay. And we have department updates, so John Geyer, you're not in your own spot.
I think he got beat out.
I was gonna say.
Sneezing, he's still up there.
He's a little too late on TV. It starts filling up by 3:00.
I guess so, meetings are getting popular. Good evening. I've got several permits. The first one I got is permit request 2433. Richard and Lisa Jones are requesting driveway permit at 5991 North Flitchwood Drive, Mason. They requested 20 foot wide driveway. John went out and looked, he didn't see any issues with it.
Okay. There are no issues, I wonder if they wish to permit 2433.
So, move?
Second.
Move.
Just finish the video.
Next one I have is permit request 2434 from Leah France of Wallbeach Valley Power Association. She's requesting permit at 2725 East 200 North Rochester. Approximately 292 feet west of State Route 25 on 200 North. They want to put in 168 foot driveway. We want to check this out, they're gonna need a four inch culvert minimum.
An entertaining motion to approve 2434, unless there's any questions? I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
My favor, motion carries three oh.
Next one I have is permit request 2434 from Miller Pipeline on behalf of NIPSCO. They're wanting to retire and put in a new existing, or replace it with a new service at 1160 West 6th Street. That's a board.
You agree with them?
Mm-hmm.
And they wish to approve permit 2435.
So, move?
Second. My favor. Your story is three oh.
Next one is permit request 2436, again from Miller Pipeline on behalf of NIPSCO. They're wanting to retire and replace with a, replace the retirement with a new line at 808 West 9th Street. Again, it's a board.
Just replace the old one, right?
Yes, that's what all these are.
Make a motion to approve.
Oh, yeah, I'll second.
Whatever.
Just be right, I got my track. And last one I have is permit request 2437 from Miller Pipeline again on behalf of NIPSCO. And they want to do the same thing at 748 West 9th Street, two houses down.
A bunch of them here, don't we?
Yes, they do.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
My favor, motion carries three oh.
So, while we're talking about permits, I want to tell you about a permit that we approved, I don't know, a month or two ago on Old 31 North for Comcast, who was for Cable Land along 31. It'd be three foot off of the back fence on the right of way. They boarded three foot off the edge of the road. They put their pedestals right at the edge of the road.
I wondered about that.
I contacted them, and they're gonna move things, so.
That was a question I was gonna ask about those pedestals, they're across the road, so.
It's not gonna fly. I mean, we'll go through there with snowplow, whiting the road out, we'll take them out.
That's what I thought.
We whiten the road, which our intentions are to put pogoing lanes on that road in the near future. It'd be right on top of it, so. Comcast gracefully said they have the contractor to move things.
Is what it is.
Yep.
They realized the mistake right away. While we're talking about Old 31, I do have air marking, they're gonna come out and stripe it probably first for next week. From what I heard, if they haven't already done it, I haven't been up there today.
You're talking north?
Mm-hmm, yep. Did they do it?
No, I haven't.
I didn't go to.
They didn't when we come up here.
But they're planning on doing that very, very soon up to the bridge and Old 31, or Olson Road between Old and New 31. North of the bridge, we're gonna do after we go in and mill out the bumps. We're gonna do that, I got a contractor coming in to do some milling, take those sharp bumps off. Once that's done, and we retire them, we'll stripe it. So, just wanted to give you an update in case somebody contacts you about it. It's in the works. Other than that, guys have been patching holes, running brush cutter. They completed chip seal last week and started pugging right away, so they're going to pug right now, waiting yet. I think they got about a mile done in three days, so that was pretty good. Old 31 South, that project's pretty well completed and on the 5th of September, at the intersection of Old and New 31, there on the south side, there's a little pull off. We're gonna meet with Endot, NSI, and Penning Brown and go through the final inspection on that. And that's at 10 o'clock, I believe.
What do you say?
Studies.
Yeah, the 5th of September.
September?
Community Crossings projects, I have to talk with Brooks Construction today. They're gonna start on 900 West tomorrow, north of the long there, Olson Road up to 110. They're gonna start on that tomorrow and then work their way over to 600 and 400. And then after the holiday, they're gonna do light thrills. Those will be getting done here pretty quick.
Good deal.
So. You know, Old 30, or State Route 14's still closed, or kinda closed, they got traffic flowing through it. They're on delay on that. Yeah, Endot held that project up because of pavement design. So they're a couple of weeks out and then they're gonna start milling it, we're gonna start receiving the millings on there. And then hopefully make short work of that, because we're way behind on that project.
And we're all going to Kiwan.
The detour we had here south of town on 25, that's been opened up, that bridge is open. And we're supposed to meet with Endot, I think, next week and go through the high pass. That's the detour we had, just look for damage.
Yes, there's some damage, somebody thought there was a little bit of damage.
There's a little, it's, it's not obsessive, but.
Looked like a little on the west side of the road, there was a couple spots there.
Compared to, compared to last time, I mean, they destroyed the road last time. I did want to present to you tonight an LPA consulting contract. We had our bridge scoring, USI won the scoring. And I've got a LPA consulting contract for that Old 31 North project, which is in five years.
Just always seen it.
I seen their copy.
It's standard lower for a.
Yes.
So you guys have any questions on the ground? Okay, the entertainer wished to approve the consulting contract with USO.
So, move?
Second. My favor, motion carries three oh.
Shouldn't have marked very neat sign. We'll see tonight, I believe, a couple of procreation requests from the highway. One's for $94,000 from MBH to Capitao, latest announced to cover the expenses of the tobacco that we bought. And then the second one's $190,000, has to add extra funds into Ictuminus, Ictuminus for road projects and the millings that we're purchasing and stuff like that. We shop the year.
And that's out of your MBH?
Yes.
Have you got your tobacco?
Yes, we've got it, got it in service. Working real nice, guys like it better than the old one. I mean, just, it's got a lot of features and its capabilities are a lot better than the old ones.
Good.
It's a good machine, good match for it. While we're talking about money, I've got a couple of things I wanted to talk about. One is the salt roof over Kiwan, I talked to the council here, last meeting, a month ago. Told them I was gonna pay for that after the first of the year, we was gonna try to get it done. Maybe November, December, pay for it, new funds next year. I was over there last week when it was raining real hard, that thing's leaking like a sieve. And that roof's not gonna hold out. We got $50,000 to $100,000 of salt in there, we need to do something with it, so.
How quick can you get on it?
Can get on it probably in October, if not sooner. Biggest thing is getting, you know, moving money around or figuring out, that's a council question, you know. Figuring out how to pay for it, so, see.
Couple of them in here.
Is there a couple more?
Yeah, but I ordered a free for a couple of them.
Hey, Randy, you're here too.
We're casting them, people in the dark.
Yeah.
But yeah, go talk to them, see what they have to say.
And then while we're talking about that, we did talk, talked to you guys and them. Last meeting also, last month, about siding that building, they was gonna pay for the siding through the rainy day. This is the site that should make shop at the highway garage here at Rochester. Which, we've got that pretty well lined up. Brian and I talked, we probably, we thought, boy, insulating that right now, spray filling that insulation would be a good deal. Again, this is more of a council question, they can afford it, but if you guys are all right with it, I'll present that to them tomorrow night. We did get a quote for it, it's not cheap, it was about, what, $24,000, I think?
Oh, it was 20.
Well, 20, 20, 20, I think.
And the ceiling was 8, 1900 or something.
Yeah, it was 198, and then I think you put on here add 4,000 if you put, if you went thicker.
So what's the bottom line?
Probably 23,000. 19 or 23,000, I don't know.
I think it'd be a smart idea, but still, you gotta see if they got the money, I mean, that's. Do you guys agree? Do you agree, Dave?
Yep. Yeah, the extra walls was 20, 20 outside. You're better, it'd be easier to do before you decide, you know?
You're not gonna be able to do it after.
So it'd save you money in the long run.
One thing about that building, it's just block, there is no insulation in there. It's been that way since the 40s, but we spent a lot of money on heat in the winter. If you're gonna put, obviously, we can't afford to put up a new building right away. If you're gonna stay in that one, you might as well.
Keep it up.
But again, that's another council question, I just wanted to bring it before them. And then, these guys here, they can hear and kind of ponder over it.
Yeah.
Such. Another thing I've got for you is a letter, this is the way I like spending money tonight. Do you want to go on?
That's not work for us.
I, we're gonna just look at the taste.
We're just looking, chasing things, they just shake their hands.
So, we had the oil spill out there at the county this summer. I redged out Luke Smith, who's 50% of one of the tenants, and his brother, cousin Travis farmed that together. I asked him to give me a high and nice bill of what he thought in the crop damages were. He sent that, $4,800 total was the amount he sent, which I don't think is too unreasonable.
So, I mean, that's, that's gonna be the ballpark.
I guess, I'm looking at how you both, well, how's that gonna work? I mean, do we, do we go ahead and pay it? Do we, is it an insurance claim?
Yeah, I was gonna ask you today, was the insurance ever contacted?
Yes, and last I talked to them, they had it all under review. And that's, that's, that was my correspondence with.
Okay, so we need to find out from the insurance company if they don't pay anything. I mean, they could doubt, and they should.
Say that.
10 grand, right? $10,000 definitely.
Yeah.
So you're gonna pay some of it, so.
Well, that's all, is this all the amount there is?
Oh, no, of course, there's other expenses, but this is the only expense to the tenant.
Okay, all right.
I agree with you, I don't think it's totally out of line, and I don't have a problem with it, it's just, do we pay it? Do we insurance? You're gonna find out if the insurance has come pay first, or do we, if we can pay and turn in the bill, go towards our deductible?
I think you need to contact the insurance company first and find out where they're at in all of this, and what they're gonna pay, and then if this comes in under the deductible, you'll have to pay.
Do we want to have a motion to approve paying this based on insurance? I mean, if insurance doesn't, we do, if insurance covers, then we let them?
I mean, it's all part of claims, they're all be locked in together, so.
We gotta pay it, I mean.
I guess the motion of approval or the.
I guess you could do a motion of this amount. Yeah, of the actual amount, but it's not yet, but.
Yeah, then in the future, we have to pay it.
It's, we're locked into the 4,800.
Yeah, we submit a claim, or if not, we let insurance take care of it.
So if we make the approval of this, and then either we pay it or debate, and then if it is covered in the claim, does do you give the bill insurance form to go into the deductible, or otherwise we stand?
I'll make a motion to approve this bill from Luke Smith for $4,800 for crop damage.
I'll second, any other questions on that?
I think you need to add it, pending insurance.
I made a motion just like she said it, pending insurance.
I'll second the same motion. I like what Rick said.
We'll see what insurance says.
Yep, okay.
And I think that's all I have for you tonight.
I hope so.
We've got enough money.
I don't get anything, thanks, John.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Might as well, Barry, you still there?
Hello?
Yep, okay, okay.
So we have, Barry, we have the appointments of the 901 director and EMA director, so you wanna have any say on anything?
Yes, both the EMA director's position and the 901 director's position was vacated when Gail retired. And I worked with the county's HR director, Christina, to update the job descriptions and post those jobs according to county policy. I can't say enough good about Christina and the work that she did to help facilitate that entire process up through the interview. So I'm not sure if she's there this evening or not, but I don't always have an HR director that is engaged, or the county may not have an HR director, so I really appreciated that. Both positions were posted on the 23rd of July. They were posted for the seven day period, they were made public thereafter. We did a statewide posting on a job board for both positions through the associations that represent either 901 or EMA. We had five applicants for the 901 director's position, and six applicants were EMA. A couple of those applied for both. We had one who applied, but didn't tell us what they were applying for. So we had a wide variety there. First, I'll start with the 901 director's position. The commissioners met an executive session last Thursday on the 16th. Interviewed two qualified applicants for the position of 901 director. Spent a great deal of time in discussion with both individuals about their experience, their training, their certifications, their goals and objectives for managing the PSAP in the future. Budget experience, just a wealth of information was exchanged. Both candidates had an opportunity to ask questions of the commissioners and HR in that meeting. And at the time that we concluded those interviews, I believe that commissioners were prepared to make a recommendation at this public meeting and take action on naming a new 901 director.
Go back to Brian now.
Yeah, do you wanna do these individually?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, so, yeah, 901, okay. So, do, I have a recommendation for the 901 director?
Yeah, for Brittany Thompson.
Okay. Second.
Second.
Okay. I guess Brittany's here, so she takes the job with her.
About got choked up on that.
Sorry, Brittany? I have a motion of the second, all in favor, motion carries three oh. I guess, Brittany's approved, accepting it.
So.
Okay.
You do accept it, right?
That's correct.
So we have Brittany's 901 for the end. Congratulations, welcome forward. Okay, Barry, if you wanna do any on that?
Commissioners, Brittany will follow up with you in regards to start date and working with commissioners and HR for that to take place. My contract with the county is still in place, that is Brittany is onboarded. And any training that may be needed is there. With Brittany being a previous employee of the 901 center, she was a deputy director, she was the IDEX coordinator. Being able to renew her certifications in the disciplines should not be any issue. And should be able to be accomplished in a timely manner upon her become the employee. So we'll be working with that. The second position was for the EMA director. In the afternoon of August 16th, last Thursday, the EMA advisory board, a representation of that board, met and co-chaired by Jerry and by Dave. I see some of the advisory board members in the audience this evening. They too interviewed two qualified applicants, spent a great deal of time exchanging a lot of information, hearing about their particular goals and objectives, their credentials in emergency management, and what they believed was in the best interest of Fulton County moving forward in EMA. The advisory board left those interviews, I believe, prepared for either Dave or Jerry to make a recommendation to the board of commissioners this evening.
Okay, we, EMA? Me too.
Yeah, go ahead, please.
Okay. We met and then we had further discussions on Friday and Saturday concerning the position. And upon final analysis, we recommend Don Suo for the EMA position.
Okay, so I'll take your recommendation and I'll make the motion that we appoint Don Suo as EMA director.
Second, okay, any other questions? All in favor, motion carries three oh, pending Don accepting.
Sure she is? You good?
Okay, Barry, I wanna thank you for all the work you've done and helped us through all of this.
Do you want to keep him on through the board this yet?
We can't, we have to, we have, it's a boiling point, we've got to back her.
I think I sent it to you a little bit ago, Barry, did you get the email a little bit ago?
Was that on the user agreement for spillman?
Yes.
Yeah, I think I saw that come in. Yes, I have it right here.
Do you need a number, or you?
I would ask the, you or legal counsel if that MOU for spillman is following the same format that you would have MOUs with any of the outline law enforcement agencies or anyone else in the county?
Yes, it has, and I have spoken to the sheriff about it also, and it's very similar to the other ones.
Yeah, based on that and it being just the user agreement of the spillman software, I think that document would be okay for you to proceed with tonight. And then the other issue that we had been pending and tabled with the new 901 director coming onboard, that's one of the areas that we need to talk to her about for, with the city and the mayor.
Good, okay.
Sounds good.
So we have the MOU here for, between Fulton County and the city of Rochester for the use of spillman, the software and the database for the amount of $5,000. And like I said, I think it's basically the same thing we did for Akron and Kiwan or Pitts.
Akron and Kiwan, I basically copied that.
Yeah, okay. So is there any other questions on that? Questions?
Got that in.
Okay, I've entertained a motion then to enter into that contract, the MOU with the city for the amount of $5,000.
Certainly.
Second. All in favor, motion carries. Okay. That's for Barry. Barry, appreciate everything, yeah.
Well, thank you very much, I appreciate the opportunity, have a good evening.
Appreciate your help and insight on those interviews.
Thank you.
Okay.
You want to shut that down, or?
Let's keep an eye on the audience. All right. Mike, we'll let you sit up here.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Tomorrow, I'll be in Culcomo doing, in the morning, for the second half of the Korean culture training discussion. This time, it's our first responders, it's gonna wind up being with community leaders, business people. Again, all that this amounts to is it's a discussion of the Korean culture. It's not about changing anything or bypassing our laws or anything. At some point, they're taping these, and at some point, we should have access to them. And once we get access to them, I'll make them available to anybody who wants to come in and view them, deal with that. Same day, later in the afternoon, there's gonna be a discussion with Endot about trying to find an easier access point to Jim's Trader's property, along with the Cramber property. There's, Jim wants certain ways to, for it to go in, there's a lot of discussion about three or four different opportunities to get into that property. So that's what we'll be doing later in the afternoon. Wednesday, let's put the housing project. We have, I believe it's five developers looking at properties. Our housing group is going to be meeting on Wednesday morning with a collection of business leaders that we've done a special invite to. They're going to tell us what they need. And we will take that kind of information, boil it down. And our project will be what Rochester needs and Fulton County needs because we're looking at some sites outside the county at this point too. So we're going to build to the housing study. And the others probably will wind up with what I call cookie cutter. They're going to run their projects type of thing. More on that once we get that taken care of. Let's see, what else? There's, oh, we put in, we also left, put in requests for the Lily Money Light Removal and Arts and Culture. And then I got an email that they missed the deadline at the Regional Planning Commission. And so we have a September 1 deadline for both projects at this point. I put in specifically for plots, but this time, we're going to put in for the whole downtown area and the county at the same time. I'm asking about half a million dollars at that point, which means we're going to have to come up with some match money, which means I'm working on getting a grant writer to research out grants for us. So hopefully that'll be where our match money comes in from. The next thing I think you'll be happy to hear is we'll have a hotel study probably by the end of the first week of September. Then we'll know what's going on. But the real thing that I think you'll be happy about is I'm talking to Nisco on Blacketer. And sometime in October, they'll be able to tell us when they're going to put the gas line up. And at the same time, I'm talking to a company about selling four lots at Blacketer. Definitely is with three. That's where it stands right now.
Thanks, Mike. Okay. Kathy Treasure, anything?
No, everything's going good, other than just letting you guys know I will be on vacation next week. I will be out of state. Other than that, she's in charge next week.
Enjoy your vacation.
Thank you.
And Don, EMA.
Hey, guys. Not a whole lot since the last commissioners meeting. One thing that I want to bring forth is the Everbridge contract I brought to about two months ago. We are locked into that. We are going to have to stay with it for one more year. So I do have the money in the budget to take care of that, so we didn't take care of it. Last week I attended, along with some of the other officials here in the county, the city. And it was a Manitowal Dam exercise. It was a tabletop exercise. Really good lie brought to the Manitowal Dam. And in conjunction with that, I will also be going to in September, the floodplain storm management, emergency management for that also in conjunction. And hopefully be able to bring back a couple of things that we talked about in tabletop, bringing forward here for commissioners. Election is coming around. We have a Homeland Security gentleman coming in tomorrow morning. And we'll be meeting with me, along with myself, representative from the sheriff's department. I don't know if she got a word you're on, Andy. My 30 tomorrow morning in the basement. Homeland Security is coming in tomorrow, going over, we've attended a meeting last week in Fort Wayne and for cybersecurity. And I know Josh is coming to that meeting also. So we'll be going through some things for the election concerning security ways, cybersecurity, things like that. Heating and cooling meeting tomorrow I've got with Amy. We will be going to Warsaw tomorrow after I get done with the election. Be going to Warsaw with Amy and checking on the heating and cooling facility they have up there in Warsaw. So I'll be gone for a little bit during that span tomorrow too, for those. In the businesses here in the county, LAPC, we're having a lunch and learn, Jerry will probably hit on that too in a minute. LAPC is doing lunch and learn on Wednesday at the fairgrounds for the businesses from 11:00 to 12:30. That evening, Albany's having a helicopter landing there at Albany for their helicopter training landing. For those here in the community who might want to go and see that also. And then we have the parade coming up on the 31st. The EMA will be involved all the way around. Volunteers have already been, we got about five, four or five things coming up, including football games. So our volunteers will be busy. You know anybody that wants to volunteer? Let us know. Thank you, gentlemen, for the opportunity, coming to serve forth with EMA here in Fulton County. And thank you to my EMA board for recommendations. Thank you, guys.
Get in touch with HR.
I will.
See what she's gonna, if she needs anything else from you.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Okay.
Casey, Henzley, Sussler.
I don't have anything. I am going to shoot out an email to you guys though about some things, some ideas to streamline some things and have some better communication with some departments. Other than that, I don't know.
Okay. Amy.
Like Don said, we're going to be tomorrow, bringing a couple of the additional pastors who have stepped up to do the temporary heating and cooling station. So at the last pastors meeting, we had a couple additional pastors who have stepped up to the plate to potentially provide opportunity to address that need. So we'll meet with those guys and Don to take that into at the next level. So slow but steady wins the race. I wish it was already decided, but you just have to get all the details. So while Trent and the other team are working on the permanent solution, we're working on the temporary because the permanent solution will be not ready by the winter. In addition, this week, Wednesday, that's the 21st, I believe so. We, I had a board meeting on Friday and spoke to the Beeman Hope Board as well as the interim director. And due to circumstances here in the city of Rochester, even though we don't have permanent solutions figured out for staffing, they are going to allow us to have an individual here in Fulton County every other week. So that individual will start on Wednesday. And so they will be here all day Wednesday and then every other week. So.
And that won't she be there?
So right now, the Recovery Cafe has asked that she be there. So we are going to test that and see if that works. She will be introduced at the Fulton County Hope Quarterly meeting on Wednesday that we are having. I've already introduced her to Rachel Art in the prosecutor's office because we do not have a victim's assistance individual. I did not realize that. So Rachel and Rachel, her name is Rachel, have already connected today. So this is the first step. Hopefully, we can then figure out the funding for full time or part time to full time person at some point. But at least getting that conversation started, having that person here available for anybody who is in need of services. So it's a nice next step to be able to help address individuals. I've seen an increase in domestic violence on the police report when Andy gives that at city council. So providing some resources, maybe not a perfect solution, but it's a start. And so that's pretty exciting. And then as far as Dora that I presented, I've been really grateful to Julie and Jillian and Casey for all the research that they've been able to help me with. So we will probably have two ordinances that we will tentatively present for just review. And then if we get some support there and feel like we've gotten things settled, I will bring that back to the next commissioners meeting for you guys to review before we actually move forward with the council. So slow but ready, steady wins race there too as well. So just making sure we get all the details organized and move forward. So doing a large conversation and so. Good things happening.
Good. Jerry.
Good evening. Can I just talk to you right here? Okay, thanks. I just wanted to give you an update. This is breaking news from our registrar down at Vital Records, Carrie Randstad. To date, we've had 97 deaths experienced here in the county. Of that, 52 females and 45 males. The manners of death, I will tell you, most of them are coarse natural. About 86, we've had four suicides, six accidental deaths and one homicide. And then we've got about three that are pending, our autopsy results, waiting on that. And we've got two, we're waiting toxicology. So once we get all those bits of information plugged in, then we can determine those causes to go along with the ones we have. And as you can see, the coroner does investigate. We're still holding it, investigating about 35 or 36% of all the deaths that occurred here in the county. Let me see. And our coroner's calls totally, we've had 35 for the year that we've helped families with of that. We've had 14 females and 21 males. So that's a little bit about our statistics and where we stand. Our death rate in the county is down this year. We're thankful for that, that's a good thing. I know the birth rate's up, I will tell you that. But I do know that with our births, we are oasis here in Fulton County, a maternity oasis. So we've got people coming in from other counties too. So that might be a little bit skewed a little bit. It's not just Fulton County people, but I wanted to let you know that too, that our birth rate's up. On September 27th, I'll be attending the coroner's training board meeting in Indianapolis, hopefully. I've got the paperwork ready, I'll probably send it to you, but I do not have an agenda. We'll be reviewing and doing our after action report of our conference back in June. So it was very successful, but we do like to keep things tweaked and keep things interesting. So I wanted to let you know that. And like Don already mentioned, we're all excited about the lunch and learn coming up on Wednesday this week. Tony Passarisi's our leader on that. He does an amazing job and he's cultivated a lot of new partners with tier two in our county. So we're excited to get them included because that only helps our county basis and foundation for safety. So wanted to let you know that. And so we're looking forward to it and it's almost here. We've been planning for it for several months, but he's led the pack and did a fantastic job. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Sounds good, Jerry, thank you.
Thank you.
Crystal.
Just have two things. Newest dispatcher, we got her certified the MD. And I did post the job opening on MD, got several applications. I have put those in a folder for Brittany to go through. That's it.
Thank you, thank you. Julie. Fulton County Chamber. You're kind of rolling that up here.
I'm going to be visiting the oasis here in a couple of weeks. Thank you for letting me come in again. It's been a few months since my last update, so I thought I'd just let you know what's happening in Chamber and tourism land. When we talked this spring, we were just starting what we called a total resource campaign as a way to give new opportunities to our members. That went really well. We had 77 businesses find opportunity and value in that. So we have been implementing those all year long and we'll continue to do that through next June. A couple of things that have come out of that is a new newsletter called The Chamber Insider. We're sending that out every other week on Monday. And that is available to all of our members to advertise in and to the city, just took advantage of that with the survey for their parks and recreation department. The county is able to do that as well as many of our members in here. So if you guys have anything where you're trying to, I have a touch point with all of the businesses in the community. And you can do that through that newsletter and that's twice a month. And then we also have a new social media campaign called Where Are We Wednesdays? Where we're just going out throughout the county and visiting different businesses. And they've, they've really appreciated that. So we'll continue to do that through next June as well. The marketing committee, last time we talked, we were putting together Fulton bags. They are put together. So these are what we're distributing to new residents and anyone that's moving back to Fulton County. We put together 50 of these bags. When I say we, there's a committee of six marketing professionals, Hannah Bany, Erica Coffey, Leslie Bowers, Krista Zima, Krista Foster and myself. We get together monthly, put these bags together, distributed them to all of the title companies, real estate offices and mortgage lenders in the county. I know they've already given out several of them, but it's just a way to say hello and welcome and to help people feel at home right away. So we did have several businesses that have advertised in there. So you'll see some that, whether it's home repair or retailers that have put some goodies in there. But then it's just a variety of resources such as where are our parks located? How can people get involved through service clubs, different organizations? Who are the local trustees? Who do they need to talk to? So all of that is in that bag just to help people feel more welcome right away. We also have extra bags available at our, at our office. So if there's an employer who's looking to do some professional recruitment, they can use those bags as a way to help people feel aggravated to the county. Couple of things that we're working on right now and upcoming events, as you know, the chili cook off and card show is right around the corner, October 12th. I'll, I'll come back from need for that. Looking ahead, we're working with, I'll need about 120 volunteers for the day, so to juggle both of those events. We're making good progress. The day that we're looking for right now is chili teams, that's really what makes it successful. So that registration process is open through September 16th. We do have all of the notes, everything as far as rules, regulations, et cetera, on our website. But anyone who's interested in being involved, it's a really good outreach program for nonprofits. It's good exposure for employers, but we really need those teams in order to make that event successful. And then just because I know it's always asked, what do we need from the county? I don't think I have any requests for the event. The only thing I'll say is, and I'll talk to carriers, if you could make sure it looks nice. That way when people come to town, we do have about 8,000 people that come to downtown Rochester. We don't use the courthouse lawn, we won't ask for that, but we would like to make it presentable and have people enjoy our area and have them be, just be proud of where, where they are. So that'll be my only request, I think. The Fulton County Leadership Academy, in conjunction for due extension, is accepting enrollment through Wednesday. So if anybody's interested in participating in FCLA this year, make sure you sign up by Wednesday and classes actually start next Tuesday. Let's see, tourism, we're just same old, same old at this point. We did distribute in my briefcase for you our wrap cards. We purchased 10,000. 8,000 of them have gone to different travel destination locations, rest areas throughout the state. So many trips to UPS and a lot of postage, but we got them all out, about 8,000. So just trying to promote Fulton County the best that we can. On our operations side, we've experienced a lot of rising costs lately and we are trying to keep our membership dues down. So we're looking for creative, unique ways to be able to diversify our income stream. We do continue to get hundreds of phone calls and referrals every month. So we're just working on how can we make sure that we're open, we're here, we're available for not only the business community, but the general public as well, looking for information, keeping our, our costs down as much as possible. So just so they know that. 19 new members this year, six ribbon cuttings. We have a couple more before the end of the year. So making progress in the county. And then the last thing, just some of the upcoming events, these are all between now and when I come back from maternity leave. So we'll see how it goes. We have a state of the schools launch in next Monday at the library. Both Mrs. Vance and Mrs. Miller will be speaking. We'll go through past year successes, challenges, as well as their outlook for this year, how they're developing students for the workforce, how to keep them engaged in the community and various structure changes. So just a good way for business leaders to get together and to network. And then our Fall Women in Business Event will be Wellness for the Working Woman on November 1st. We'll have a PMO speakers, Jessica Riffle with Purdue Extension, Lisa Willis Skidley with 4C Health and Climate Hall with Elevate Studio, all talking about our wellness, how to take care of ourselves as working women. So that'll be coming up November 1st. And then lastly, we're gearing up for Small Business Season, which kicks off with Small Business Saturday, November 30th. We'll do another two week campaign, really encouraging people to shop small, stay local before they go to the big box stores for holiday shopping. We'll have a fun game that plays into that. I think we're going to give away another $500 in Chamber dollars. And then we'll continue to do promotions through the end of the year for our small businesses. So just things going on that wanted to keep you in the loop with what's happening. And thank you for supporting us and just sharing everything for you.
Sounds good. Good luck in the next couple of weeks. That's right. Hey, Julia, you might want to put that back some. Are you leaving?
I'm leaving.
Okay.
I'm going to go lay down.
Julia.
All right, Ken, if you want me to. You want? You know that. RVP, I started maybe two months ago as executive director. I'm keeping hours on Wednesday in the barber shop underneath the Chamber of Commerce. Last Wednesday, I went out and surveyed Maine, just getting up to date information, but also helping on the DORA for the City Council. Learning, getting, making sure Main Street signed up like properly in the Main Street programs, doing compliance classes, hiding art for the Times Theater Art Auction that's coming up August 30th. Keeping very busy, making my rounds at the city meetings, just trying to introduce myself as much as possible and still going strong at the theater. So as always, call me. Any questions, any ideas, suggestions? We're keeping busy.
Where's your art auction going to be?
At the theater. Jim Scott donated the entirety of his personal collection of his own work, which will be pretty cool. And all proceeds go directly to the Times Theater, which if we handled this right, could be one of the most generous gifts we've received so far. We've been getting them framed. There will be $100 price range where you can lead with something in for that price, which is in reserve. And then we'll have a silent auction. And then a fantastic show afterwards, a George Harrison show, and he's actually in London right now playing and then coming to Rochester. He's part of the original Beatlemania, just kind of a cool networking connection we've made with Nashville, Indiana.
And what day is that?
Friday, August 30th. It's kind of a kickoff for the Labor Day weekend. And then we'll go into the Nickel Plate Weekend, which the parade's gaining tons of speed, which is good. The festival should, the bands are wonderful this year. So everyone's in event mode. Do tomatoes coming to the theater the day of the Chili Cook Off, right after. So we got that kind of go Sam and Hans and Chili and some tomatoes. And he hasn't been here for a long time. So yeah. And we're getting ready to do a Manitah Monster Fest at the theater. Trivia night, Mike Halwing trivia movies, and then concert to benefit the Jimmy Downs Foundation. So we've got a lot coming up.
Good.
And DORA will help. The mayor's been so supportive of sidewalk carts and we've got some small victories coming.
Good. Thank you. Okay. We have a employee that has requested to live from home. Special situation, so I don't know if you can approve that. So moved.
Second.
All favor. Motion carries three out. Okay. You guys had a chance to look at tribal requests over?
Yep.
Can you approve those?
Oh, but I'll have to abstain from mine.
Yeah. And mine too.
So do we know good and bad?
Yeah. Okay. Under your condition, move all the tribal authorizations except Mr. Randstad's.
And mine.
All of them except?
Except.
Okay. I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Second.
All day, man. So all day long. Motion carries three out. Okay. And then Dave, entertaining motion to approve Mr. Randstad's tribal request.
Make the motion.
All second. All favor. Motion carries two out. I'll make a motion to approve Dave's.
Second. So moved.
That was simple. We have the minutes from August 5th and.
Is the one, I think.
Just the one?
Yeah.
Yep, just the one.
Fifteen, that's.
We took it out for corrections. Okay. Under your condition, motion to approve those minutes. So moved.
Second.
All favor. Motion carries three out. Okay. We have, you guys had a chance to look over Fulton County transpos.
Statement.
Budget. Budget. You guys look that over.
Yep, I left it over. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. All favor. Motion carries three out. Okay, we have a transfer request. You guys had a chance to look over all the claims, transfers, appropriations, if and.
Yep.
Any questions? Okay, we have a transfer request from the park. Office supplies of $50, two printing, paid for a photo contest deal. Okay, we have payroll, 726 of 24, $276,966.37 with a payroll deduction to $120,388.90. Payroll claims for 8/9 of 24, $273,680.80 with a payroll deduction of $99,183.14. Insurance claim docket for August fees of $53,796.80. Insurance claim docket for 8/1 to 8/7, $24,651.82. Utility claim of $8,797.22. Distribution claim of $743,615.80. Solid waste, District Coast fee for 7/31 of $33,332.37. Insurance claim docket for 8/8 to 8/14 of $21,796.65. We've got old business. We're, do you have any old business?
No, we do not.
Dave?
No.
Casey?
No.
Any old business for the public?
Right. On the MOU, the other one, do you have any idea when we can expect something?
I, as quick as possible, but we need to go through some particulars and make sure we're all on the same page, I guess.
We need to make sure Brittany's involved with the meetings on that so she understands that she's going to be doing it, so.
I just, just so I have an idea.
Yeah. We're going to get on it as quickly as we can here, so.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, you guys. Okay. New business?
No.
No.
Casey? Any new business?
Well, I don't throw the business, it's more of a complaint. I live in Northern Lake and I came a little bit over two years ago to zoning about a property up there on North Sunset Boulevard, 6356. Larry clawed out. It's a real pigsty. And when I went to zoning, they told me that they would fine him for not cleaning up his property and when it reached $2,000, it'd be turned over to the prosecutor. And to my knowledge, nothing was ever done. So then I went to the health department. And I've been back and forth with the health department. They don't seem to be interested at all. But they did go out there and they talked to Larry and said as long as he had public access to bathroom, because he's had no electricity, no gas, no water, and no sewage for over four years now. He'd been living on that property. Garage is four and a half feet deep in garbage bags because he's never had no trash pickup. His basement's even worse than that. I went to the health department and he said he went out there and talked to Larry. Larry told me he had a public restroom and a disconvenience. And so the health department was okay with that. And he has done absolutely nothing.
Last Monday, I'm on the area plan board, which is area, which is Heather, the one that controls this. We are her boss on the board, the whole board. We've got a little big member board. That meets, I gotta give you the date, I can't remember. It's always the last Monday of the month, whatever. Somebody got a calendar? It's quicker.
Isn't it this coming Monday?
Yeah, you're on it.
Yeah.
Twenty-sixth.
The 26th?
Yeah.
The 26th at 7:00 PM in this room?
Okay.
I would come here, I would come to that meeting and tell the board.
Okay.
The board's her boss, we'll ask her why something he's been done or why.
Right. Yeah. I mean, I'm really concerned. You know, the neighbor across the street got cockroaches because he used to go down there all the time. He's got cockroaches, there's rats, there's mice, everything. I mean, my house has been taken over by mice in the wintertime, which I've never had a problem with before, so I know that's where they're coming from. And it's really a health issue up there at Lake. It really is.
Because she's the one that's got the authority to, like you say, start fining them and after the fine reaches so much and they don't.
Well, you know, he's not even living there. The lady lives up the lake. She was real good friends with him. She took, he had a plan and he was going to Mississippi on his boat. She took him down Logan's Port actually two weeks ago and dropped him off at Logan's Port and he went out to Walbach, he said, in Mississippi. So he's actually abandoned the house. It's just sitting there empty right now. But my biggest problem is, I don't care if he's living there or he's not living there. I want that mess cleaned up.
Sure.
You know, I've had enough of it. I really have. You know, it's horrible. You can see the pictures.
Yeah.
I mean, I didn't go in the house. I wouldn't step foot in that house to begin with to give you guys any picture of what it looks like in there, but I'm sure it's probably even worse. So, you know, it's a real concern, it really is.
Bring the pictures and Monday night, 7:00.
Seven o'clock.
Yeah, there's a couple more members.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Anybody else new business? Okay. Any public comment? Okay. Here we go. Under your condition, motion to recess.
Second.
All favor. Motion carries three out.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. Anybody else new business? Okay. Any public comment? Okay. Here we go. Under your condition, motion to recess.
Second.
All favor. Motion carries three out.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else new business? Okay. Any public comment? Okay. Here we go. Under your condition, motion to recess.
Second.
All favor. Motion carries three out.